2019 meeting of the Norton Board of Selectmen. Please rise to the --
Pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interior public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members are present. Welcome back, Brad.
Thank you very much.
Take something out of order here. We have a recognition of a Boy Scouts Community Service Project. Beth, how are you?
I'm great, everyone. I'd like to introduce you to Ryan Morley. He's with Troop 61 from here in Norton, and he is working on his Eagle Scout project. And his project that he chose to do was to repaint the senior center. And I don't know if you all have been by, but it looks phenomenal from the outside. It looks really, it looks great. So I just wanted to publicly let you guys know what we've been up to over there and let you -- do you want to say anything, Ryan?
I would like to thank you for this honor.
Thank you for what you did, for your project. I think it's terrific. I agree. I've driven by it. It does, it looks fabulous. So, well done. Good job. How far away are you from completing your Eagle Scout requirements?
I just have a couple of things paperwork, and that's it, really.
That's the big ceremonies in May.
Big ceremonies in May? That's a huge commitment and a big undertaking, so congratulations to you. Well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, under appointments, resignation, and retirements, we have an appointment of full-time water sewer technicians. We have three of them. Mr. Conway?
Yep. From Michael Units Town Manager, I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen that in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I have appointed the following individual as full-time water sewer technician, Christopher Neves. Neves?
Yep.
Excellent. Said appointment was made on December 2nd, 2019, in accordance with provisions of the Norton Charter, and will be effective December 17th, 2019, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? Okay. Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Christopher Neves to the water as a full-time water sewer technician.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks.
All right, number two. From Michael Units, I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen that in accordance with provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I have appointed the following individual as full-time water sewer technician, Jordan Harris. Said appointment was made on December 2nd, 2019, in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter, and will be effective December 17th, 2019, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the appointment of Jordan Harris as a full-time water sewer technician.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
One more, Ms. Conway?
Yes, sir. I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen that in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I have appointed the following individual as full-time water sewer technician, Jennifer McConville.
Yes, sir.
Said appointment was made on December 4, 2019, in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter, and will be effective December 19, 2019, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date.
Any questions or discussion?
Different start dates, Mike? Is that?
They're all gonna, you're all starting on the Christmas vacation week, right in before Christmas.
Okay.
So that, that short week, they're gonna do some training at the plant.
Okay. The first, first two were the 17th, this one's the 19th?
Yeah, and their hire letters, we'll make them all the 23rd.
Okay.
Any additional questions, discussion? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer McConville as a full-time water sewer technician.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Open board, good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, in case you didn't have enough fun last meeting, we've got some more licenses to do. So we'll, we'll continue to do it the way that we did before. We'll each take a pages, only three pages, so two and a half.
Mike, before we move on, can I just ask one question on the, on the positions? So are they now fully staffed?
They are now.
Open and operate?
Yeah, because these three were replaced, the three that you moved up in the last.
Okay.
So the one position, still looking for an assistant watering sewer superintendent, but as far as the workers, all fully staffed.
Okay. Are we getting an update from them next meeting?
I can ask them, on the status of the plant?
Yes.
Yep, sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so we have some license renewals. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the following license renewal applications. A&amp;E of Norton, Inc., DBA, Barrowsville Station, 194 South West Street, for a retail package, all alcoholic. Bogai and Brewing, LLC, 33 West Main Street, malt-only pouring permit. 292 LME, Inc., DBA, the downtown, 292 West Main Street, for a common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic, live entertainment, dancing jukebox. Mass Sunday Entertainment for live entertainment, dancing and jukebox. Emma's Enterprises, Inc., DBA, Emma's Pub and Pizza, 130 Mansfield Ave., common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic, jukebox, toy taxi, automatic amusement vending machine, live entertainment. Mass Sunday Entertainment for jukebox, live entertainment, toy taxi, automatic amusement vending machine. Fillmore Nation Post 8049, VFW of USA, 38 Summer Street, club, all alcohol. Is that right? Yeah. Common Vic, live entertainment, jukebox, dancing, one coin operated pool table, mass Sunday Entertainment for live entertainment, jukebox, dancing, coin operated pool table. Raphael Brusasi, DBA, Fisherman's 3, 411B, Old Colony Road, common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic, and live entertainment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Do we need to do a roll call?
You're right, I'm sorry. Thanks, Mike. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Delly?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes. Thanks for being on top of that, Jack.
No problem. I'm a fast learner sometimes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a license renewal for the following businesses. Zings International, Inc., DBA, Great Woods Mandarin, 175 Manciel Ave., common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic. 336 Toth, LLC, DBA, Norton Tavern on the Hill, common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic, live entertainment, one video game, golden tee, two pool tables, and a jukebox. Produce Barn Incorporated, DBA, Produce Barn, 72 Mansfield Ave., retail packaging, all alcohol. Sabatino's Tortoria, Inc., DBA, Sabatino's Tortoria, 111 West Main Street, common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic. Tournament Players Club of Boston at Great Woods, LLC, 400 Arnold Palmer Boulevard, common Vic, all alcohol, common Vic. We can just keep on going right down?
Yeah, we can just keep going right down.
KMPZ, Inc., DBA, Honeydew Donuts, 61 West Main Street, common Vic. M.A. Pizza, Inc., DBA, Roma Italian Pizza, 360 Old Colony Road, common Vic.
Let's stop there, though. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to, to renew the licenses for the aforementioned businesses. Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Delly?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following license renewals. Gregory Dagnan, DBA, Blockbuster Auto, 409 Old Colony, Class II Used Car Dealer's License. Goosebrook Garage and Recycling, LLC, DBA, Goosebrook Garage, 36 Dean Street, Class II Used Car Dealer's License.
Can I just keep going?
You're on such a roll.
Absolutely. Goosebrook Garage Recycling, LLC, DBA, Goosebrook Garage, 36 Dean Street, Class III Motor Vehicle Junk License. John Freeman and Dorothy A. Freeman, DBA, Freeman's Garage, 29 Ford Road, Class II Used Car Dealer's License. John Freeman and Dorothy A. Freeman, DBA, Freeman's Garage, 29 Ford Road, Class III Motor Vehicle Junk License. Kevin's, LLC, 187 West Main Street, Class I Agent or Seller's License for the sale of new motor vehicles.
Mr. Units, why are we reviewing the Freemans?
Yep, the license was written correctly, but on the list that you had the last time, it just said John Freeman.
Oh, okay.
And last year, if you remember, they added Dorothy for that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew the aforementioned license, business licenses. Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Delly?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
I can vote yes. Unanimous.
Now, to finish this up, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following license for a lodging house, the North Cottage Program Incorporated, 69 East Main Street, Lodging House, common Vic.
Second. Okay. Motion is second to approve the renewal of the business license for the North Cottage Program. Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Delly?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Bramwell?
Yes.
I two vote yes. Unanimous. Thank you. Announcements?
Apparently it's the Jack Conway Show.
It's the Jack Conway Show tonight, yeah, absolutely.
All right, two announcements tonight, almost a missing one. The Festival of Lights is this Sunday evening, December 8th, at 5:00 PM, on the Norton Town Common. Come and be merry. Join us for hot cocoa, cookies, craft singing, dancing, and lights. Special visit by Santa and Mrs. Claus. With special thanks to Bob Kimball, the Charlie Garden Club, Norton Community Lines, Norton Fire Department, Norton Girl Scouts, Norton Singers, and On the Bar dancers. Second one today, wreaths across America, Norton Ceremony information. The Norton Ceremony for Wreaths Across America will be held on Saturday, December 14th, 2019, at the Norton Common Cemetery, across from St. Mary's Church, at 12:00 noon. This is Norton's first year as an official wreath across America. Norton has approximately 600 graves. Our goal is to place a live wreath on the grave of every veteran in Norton. Ceremonies performed across the nation simultaneously, and will be followed by the placement of wreaths on all veterans' graves. The public is invited to attend. If, you can reach out to Veteran Services if you would like to purchase more wreaths at 508-285-0274.
And the wreaths all arrived today. Very early. Highway did a good job working with Estelle to store them away, and we had one resident say we could use their garage to store some, so they're ready to go.
That's terrific. Okay, under new business, surplus property, Norton Fire Rescue Department.
This is a piece of equipment, a Chevy, they just received their Chevy 4,500 series flatbed truck, and they no longer need the 1967 Kaiser.
Wait, wait, I want this thing.
M35 forestry truck, so it's gonna be declared surplus, and it'll be interesting, we'll let you know.
Yeah, right. I know, yeah, just do, could we donate it to a fire museum? Seriously? There are a lot of those around. Okay, thank you. Next.
Do you want to vote to declare?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Chair would entertain a motion to, to declare, we're about to take them separately, we can do them together.
Oh, just the one.
It's just one. The 1967 Kaiser M35, two and a half ton forestry truck as surplus.
So moved. And the pickup body, too.
So, motion is second. Any further discussion?
What do we do with this? Once it's?
It goes up on the municipal bid, and then we hope someone buys it, yeah.
Yeah. We sell it.
Yeah.
I want to see this truck, but.
You could go on municipal bid, maybe you can, you know, spend a thousand bucks, have a great truck to push around town.
Am I gonna need a permit to park that in my, in my house?
You can drive it just like the Flintstones did.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion is second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
We also have a, Chair would entertain a motion to declare the pickup body off of a 2004 Ford F350 to be declared surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to set this spring annual town meeting.
Yeah, and recommending that the annual town meeting be set for May 18th, and that warrant be open tonight, and the warrant has to close at least 90 days before the town meeting, so the warrant would close on February 12th.
Mike, do you know offhand the dates that we did the last two meetings?
The dates?
The dates of the last, of like 2019 spring and the 2018 spring?
I don't off the top of my head, but we always, we're always around May 15th.
Yeah, it's usually right around the 15th.
So I'm asking because one of the potential articles that will go in, I don't know if there's, there's, I don't, I don't know the rule specifically, it was around the bylaw changes, and I think when something's voted down, you can't bring it in front of a meeting for two years. I just want to make sure we're outside that two-year window.
Um.
And I can, if you give me a second, I can look, I think I have the minutes, or actually, I can go online.
If, if we, it wouldn't help if we called a special.
No.
Because still running on the same.
Same day, yeah, exactly.
And I don't, you know, and the reason I say it, not because we would run into that issue specifically, but there's a chance that that could be a recommendation, you know, we don't know what the bylaw changes are right now.
Okay.
I just want to make sure there's not conflict, but let me see if I can find, I think the town clerk has all the meeting minutes, so it should have a date, if I can find it real quick.
Would it be in the books right down there?
Yeah.
15th last year.
It was the 15th last year?
What about the year before?
Unmoved.
Peter, do you remember the date of the town meeting in, was it 2017?
2017.
May, and 2018 is May 14th, and 2019 is May, 2008, May 2019 is May 15th, 2018, May 14th, 2017 is May, the 8th, 2017 is May 9th, 2015, May 11th, 2014, May 12th, and 2013 is.
Oh, my God, thanks, Peter.
That's, I tell you, that's right. I'm gonna be pretty, pretty impressed here. Okay, so I got 18, annual, 5/14.
14th and 15th. Good job, Peter.
I have, for, which one are you looking at, Mike? The 19th?
18th was on the 14th, and the 19th was on the 15th.
Right. The 2018?
May 14th.
And 2019?
May 15th.
May 15th. Okay, so we would just have to be outside of the 14th, May 14th. Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
So Chair would entertain a motion to set the date of the spring annual town meeting for May 18th, 2020?
At the high school.
At the high school?
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under old business, we have a water bodies discussion. Mike? Hi, how are you?
Brian Brady's here, and Carol's a wicker as well, so. I know, not at the time of year people think about using the water, but I can tell you there's a whole crew waiting for that ice to freeze and get out there and do some ice fishing, and use the lakes and stuff, so. I think a couple, a few of the things that we had talked about, again, did everyone get the copy? I couldn't, my printer kicked out, but did everyone get that PDF that's been going around and get a chance to look at it? We've had really significant progress in the, with the project in the two years, two-plus years that we've been going, so I know. We also have, Mike had sent out the estimate, estimates for the next couple seasons with some, some figures, so. Mike, do we have the exact amount that's left?
Yeah.
In the budget?
Right now, we have $255,452, and the estimate to get us through June, and he's being very conservative here, staying on the high end.
Yes.
He has here $345,400. I told him, well, we won't be able to do that, because we'll be short $89,948, but he said it, it's not necessarily gonna be this, he just wanted to have everyone prepared. The more, the other important thing would be to look at the next years to make sure that we.
Going out to 20.
Have an article on the warrant to fund.
Now, would we need to do that by this February?
We'd have to do that for, yeah, for the May town meeting, yeah. And when I did talk to ESS, they, they did send you probably, like you were saying, Charlie, the concern there is there's a new plant, and it took, after the drawdown, it took off, and.
Yep.
He's concerned that if we don't treat that this year, that that plant is gonna take over, so that needs to be managed. Winnicott looked good this year, but some beds were coming back at the end of the year, and the reservoir, they've kept up with the water chestnut, and that's the big thing, keeping that at bay. And so with Winnicott, they said they'll look at it in the spring, and maybe that can be held off until there's more funding, so.
Yeah, I, I think overall, and I think Brian lives on Winnicott, and we've seen a significant increase in the usability of the, of the waterway, so this has been a great project, and to keep going with it is, you know, definitely, we're gonna need to have maintenance, you know, over the next number of years and monitoring, so we're gonna have to find a mechanism somehow to, you know, have some funding. Obviously, it's not gonna be as much as we've had in the past, but, you know, for monitoring and, and treatments, to keep it in check, because it can go back the other way pretty quick, so, you know, with the, with that usage has been up. Brian, what have you seen over on Winnicott?
Winnicott's been, it's beautiful the last two years, and this year, they didn't, they didn't need to treat at all. I mean, we have some spots, like you said, but they went from, I think it was 100 acres, they said, that it's gone from, it was like 139 acres, and it's down to 11 acres now.
Which is significant, and, you know, three years ago, it almost looked like you could walk across the lake, so I think the residents over there are pretty happy, and, which means that that's, that's a state boat ramp over there, right? That goes under the bridge?
Yeah.
I've made a couple calls to DCR, I haven't gotten any calls back. The state signage over there is faded, it's barely readable, overgrown trees and bushes around it, you know, it's all within 100 feet of the water, so. I don't know if there's a way of the town to reach out officially, I don't know if that would be DCR or Mass Wildlife, I think it, DCR, may see if they could do something with, you know, upgrading the signage, because with, you know, the cleanup, certainly gonna get a lot more usage of that little ramp over there. So we do have a kiosk over there that some scouts put up with some info on it. I know the, I had put up one of the temporary signs with all the town bylaws, that disappeared. I don't know if it fell off or was pulled off, but I didn't see that when I was over there the other day. But, you know, any updated signage over there, too, at that particular spot, certainly needed. Oh, speaking of signage, how are we doing on signage?
He says he can do the signs except for the pictures. He cannot do pictures on his machine.
When you, like a printed photo picture?
So.
Like this? Could he do that?
Let me, let me check. But you know the ones we had before that we put up?
Yeah.
You guys all put up? He said he can do all the.
Yeah, well, we need some, that, that poster had a very tiny invasive plant icon. We need that bigger and very prominent, something like that. Just to have it, a little teeny icon on a big sign isn't gonna do much. We need its own nine-by-12 or whatever sign, solid, that can be mounted, you know, to a pole or something that, you know, that, that, we really need that.
I'll get this back to you.
And I don't know if we had, there was any photos or anything on, you know, that we need, really, it's just the laws, you know, clear, clearly stated, and, and, you know, laid out in an easy form that.
Big enough, people are gonna stop and notice it.
Yeah, and it, you know, you see them, they're not, you know, this big, they're, you know, so we have copies on the kiosk, but constantly taking them, putting it back up when, when it comes down, so. Certainly seeing the usage increase, you know, absolutely, so.
Yep. Any questions? Steele?
Mike, for the money that we have to have available for the next year, the $345, what, that money has already been set aside, right? That's the one that we're short.
Right.
And then, and then do we already have some sort of mechanism for after this to put money inside?
No, we'd have, we'll have to appropriate money, have an article, and.
An article to, like, amend the previous article for funding, or would it be a separate?
It would be a new article, and for the next two fiscal years, so the 134 and the 163.
Because I've always, I mean, this is such a great project, and this board has been supportive from the get-go, your committee has worked so hard, but my biggest concern all along was we're putting a lot of money out, and if we don't have money put aside for the maintenance going forward, it's a lot of money that the town wasted, so I'm really concerned about having that mechanism in there, and I'm wondering, and I don't know if we're allowed to do this, but we should see some decent money coming in from the industrial park. Is there any way we can take some of that money and put it into a conservation account or something for our water bodies?
You could have an article, and you could, through capital, you could put so much money into a.
I mean, it's money.
Could have a separate article and just.
Money we need.
Yep.
Anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there. And the other thing is on Winnicott, the boat ramp, that's state-owned, right? So it's a state-owned boat ramp?
I believe.
Which is bringing people from out of our town in. Do you think there's any way we can ask the state for money? I mean, where?
For signage and.
For signage and for the upkeep of the reservoir.
Yeah, because they have state signage there now, it's very faded and, you know, overgrown and stuff, but.
But, yeah, the concern happens with the maintenance.
Right, because where this is, property is being used by people outside of Norton.
And the river goes down into the state wild, state-owned wildlife management area as well.
Yes, I wonder if there's some way we could ask them for money, and you mentioned a, a state committee a couple minutes ago, wasn't Fish and Wildlife. a, a state committee a couple of minutes ago, wasn't Fish and Wildlife?
DCR.
DCR.
DCR. I wonder if they grant through one of those.
It could be, yeah.
Yep.
They, and I mean, I don't mind, I don't mind looking into it too, or if the water bodies commission would look into it. But I just think if we've got a state-owned boat ramp on our property, they should be helping pay to support the, the property there.
Right.
Or the usage of it.
Agreed.
Um, another thing that we had talked about the last time we didn't know we were going to go is, you know, obviously, the police department doesn't have the funding for enforcement in the summer. Response times for environmental police are sometimes days. So I don't know if there's going to be a comprehensive public safety article proposed in the spring. I know the fire department has a safety boat and geez, it'd be nice if we could get some town enforcement out there, other than, you know, a police car driving by the beach, you know, because with, with the added usage, certainly could be used, you know, because right now, there's really none. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Steele.
We had talked about this before as well. And why can't we look into now with Brian of the fire department, probably Brian, right, because it'd be a police enforcement, but a seasonal employee, like if we hire a seasonal police person, right, to monitor the lakes?
And I'm sure there's grant funding for some type of boat. I don't know how the fire department came across there.
Jet ski or something for him to, or her, to go around. But I, I can't see it, I can't see it being handled correctly because we have so much responsibility already with our police department, unless we actually make a special-
Yeah, a special appointed position within the police department for environmental.
Seasonal, part-time. I mean, we don't need somebody out there every single day. We just need to have it-
Just the busy times, you know.
Busy times and enough at different times so that people don't know when they're going to be there. So they'll, you know, just by, you know, like a speed shop, they might be there and they may not. People obey. But I'm thinking a part-time employee, seasonal, it shouldn't be a big expense to us. And buy a jet ski.
Yeah, or a small, small boat.
I'll do it.
Can you fit any chickens on the jet ski?
I thought we talked to him about that when he was here once, for something else. And he said, he said he didn't have any problems, like having extra patrols and stuff in the area.
I know he, he did it. Was it only one weekend?
Saturday weekend.
That was all it was?
It's not consistent. It's, and it never, I don't think it ever will be consistent unless we actually make a decision with that.
Yeah, and you don't get the state environmental police patrolling regularly. They're so understaffed and busy with, you know, taking calls and stuff, that very rarely do you see them just doing a patrol. You know, they're more likely to hit the state boat ramps, you know, Lake Sebasia, you know, stuff like that, before, the NIP, before they hit, you know, the, some of the town ramps and stuff. So.
Yeah, Mr. Bramall?
I think liability-wise, it'd be tough to have a part-time person doing that. I think we'd have to utilize probably call officers, only because they have to be properly trained.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a protocol that-
Why not use a contract company that? I'd like to talk, I think that it's a conversation with the chief, right? Like, one, to see, does he have available staff now? Two, do some sort of additional, I mean, and, and not like just, let's go down once a weekend, but actually put it into their patrol, right? Like, it becomes daily operations, but to the point, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, you know, we had, we had the conversations about the contract people, like with the flex position, he made a comment about not being in the contract. But I, I think that, you know, there's obviously rules of state contracts, and we can always look at companies. I mean, there are a lot of-
I'd be concerned about bringing in a private company for public policing or public security. I just think that that's, I, I get where you're going with it, but I, I don't know if we could, I don't know if we could bring in a public, a private company.
I don't know if they'd have the authority.
Right.
On, you can have a private enterprise on private property, but I don't know how you'd have private enterprise on public.
Maybe it would be like a police detail.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was saying, ex, you know.
Yeah.
Now you're talking about it. That's more money.
I realize it's more money. It's just that-
Details more money than hiring, like a part-time officer per se, right?
Right. It's just that, for, I think, the liability. I mean, if the part-time officer wasn't properly trained and was hurt, then the town would be liable.
Well, I think that would have to go with it, that this person would be qualified to do the job and that they'd be, you know, I'm sure that there's, Brian would know more than us, but I'm sure there's all kinds of training out there for law enforcement, especially water-related and, you know.
And if, if we could get Chief Clark in, because let's get the subject man or expert on.
It's a good time of year to kind of work this stuff out during the off-season and see if we can, you know, try to provide some type of solution.
And Dave, can you think about like requirements, like, like what you would want somebody, you know, obviously, like you made mention of water, right? Like, if you'd actually want them out on the water. So he can think about-
Well, patrolling on, on the water, having a presence on the water is certainly a benefit for, you know, public safety.
And I'm sure there are other things too. Can you guys just think about that and like send us five or six bullets on, on what your expectation is of, of having somebody available in that capacity?
Yeah, well, I think it's, one, monitoring. Again, we've had a big problem, I think, at Juniper Beach with
Yeah.
usage of times. I think we're going to start having that maybe over at Winnicott. You know, once everybody realizes that, you know, that's more viable again for boating. So. And just for maintain, you know, the islands, you know, we, we do the cleanup every, the end of every summer. And, you know, there's still people that go out there and trash those islands on a regular basis. So catching some of those people and stopping some of that stuff, because it's the same people over and over usually, you know. So, and right now, there's really no way to, how do you police that? You know, you rustle people up during the morning of the cleanup, you know. Usually, we do it Labor Day weekend or something like that, and that gets the word out, you know, not to trash the place. But, you know, every year, we take truckloads and truckloads out. It's getting less, I think, you know, when, I think with the enforcement of the overnight parking at Juniper Beach, you know, you hear the buzz around the lake, that it was a little quieter this past summer, you know. So on the islands at night. So. Another thing, anyone else have, that the committee discussed was a possibility of putting a community kayak canoe rack somewhere, where people could bring their car top access, not boats per se, and have a rack system where people would bring their own lock and lock it up. Especially in the Grove area, it may cut down on all the parking at Juniper Beach. If we could get car top access in certain areas, it might open up a little more room down at Juniper Beach for the boats and stuff and the trailers. Just a thought, because we have, is it South Lakeview where the old Grove building was? That big field right there next to, or 237, you know, where there's, many communities have these freestanding wooden racks. Some of them are metal. And people will bring, you know, leave them there for the season, locked up with their own personal locks and stuff, you know. And I think in the Grove, where you have such a tight group of houses in one small area, that, you know, that might be something that might work, where people could walk from their house down to the lake instead of hopping in the car, you know, if they knew there was a safe spot down there that they could lock up to. Just a thought. It's popping up in other communities that have public access and stuff.
I think it's a good idea. Can, can you do the same on that? Like, have, have a discussion within your group on where you would expect to see and what type, and then
Yeah, I think-
If you can research potential costs, so we have an idea.
Yeah, I think we could probably, I was thinking a scout project. We always have scouts coming. We could even do a small GoFundMe for something. I don't think materials would be more than, you know, a few hundred bucks on lumber to, to start with, because you probably wouldn't need, you know, something more than, maybe 10 or 20 boats to start, you know. And then if, if, if the demand is there every year, maybe we, you know, we build a new one. So. And that's not big money. I think that could be done through fundraising, non-town funds, but. So. But as far as a site, I think that, I don't know, South Lakeview, there is an, an opening in the, the water line with, you know, the tree line that's been there. That might be a spot. 237, there's certainly parking there and, and room down there for something too. Just a matter of, you know, where you guys think it would be best. I think maybe over in the Grove somewhere, because it would cut down on, you know, people driving, maybe get more foot traffic walking down to the lake. So, just a thought.
And that'd be a good conversation with conservation.
Yeah, I sent an email out. I didn't hear back from Jen. I don't know if she was going to run it by there next meeting or not. But is, is that South Lakeview property? Is that conservation land? Is that town?
I think it's town.
So governed by the board then? So, because that might be the ideal spot as far as, you know, access to, you know, the Grove neighborhood, you know, as far as people coming down on foot or bike. So.
Great. Any further, any other questions? Thank you guys very much.
All right, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Let us know with the article if you need us, if you need us for anything.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Excellent. Town managers report.
If you've driven down Elm Street, the building on the corner of Elm and Cross is about 50% down now. The roads have been closed at 7:00 AM in the morning, and they open again at 4:00. So hopefully, within a couple of weeks, that'll be all done.
Great. Who owns the title to that land? Is it the bankruptcy court, or is there like R and B Holdings or something like that?
There is no owner of the property right now. It's just, governed by the court whenever we do anything. And that's why we went to the court to get the court order to demo the buildings.
Okay.
And the EPA continues to work on the abatement of the oil on the other side. And they, they've been putting the soil in the parking lot on Elm Street and covering it at night. And I saw them truck some of that out of there today. So.
Wasn't there a question about some other stuff that was being put there as well a couple of meetings ago?
I think-
Like materials or something?
I think maybe that was the discussion on the demo, the wood that's piled up on the side of the building.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure on that. I'll have to check with the building inspector on that and see where that's at.
Okay.
Blue Star?
And Blue Star, obviously, they lost some time this week with the weather, but they were out there again today. And everything seems to be going fine with the demo, I mean, the demo, the detour.
The detour. Have you had any calls in, complaints?
Haven't had any complaints here at all. And they have a groundbreaking next Wednesday.
For the detour? Can you ask Brian if, or Chief Clark, if he could get a couple cups over there a little bit? People driving down Plain Street, like it's 123.
Okay.
It's really, I was running there the other day in the daylight, and I was like, wow, I feel like I'm running on a main road. There's, they're not even slowing down. They come around the corner and it's, it's crazy. So, I mean, it wasn't enough for me to call in, but as long as you brought it up, maybe just have somebody over there. And maybe not like school hours, maybe a little bit off peak, like the travel time to get home, like-
When there's more-
Around four to six.
Less cars than they can.
Yeah, exactly.
But it should be open then, because I thought it was only going-
What is it closed, what is it?
Supposed to be eight to four is what we-
Okay, so maybe, I'm trying to think when I was out there. I think I was out there like maybe between three and four. So maybe a little bit later in the day.
Okay.
People are like flying down that road.
And the notice of debt authorization?
Yeah, last, in your pack, I don't know if it's in your packets or it was in your mail slots. I know that. Just as required by legislation and when the regional dispatch was established, whenever there's any borrowing, they have to notify you and each Board of Selectmen. And they just provided a notice of the borrowing for $1,500,000 for the construction of the building. The bids came in higher than anticipated. I don't know if that's something you're seeing, Jack, but they did get six bids. And they were looking at, they were seven million, and it came in at like 8.7 million. So, and all the bids were close, so it wasn't like, you know, so-
That's crazy.
Yeah. And so they had to increase the borrowing by 1.5 million. And we did get a letter from State 911 committing to still funding the increased costs. So everything should, as the notes come due, they'll be being paid by 911 grants.
Is everything?
Yep.
Selectmen's report in mail. Mr. Bramall?
I guess the only thing I have to report is, I want to thank everybody who's reached out to me, checking out my health. And I'm getting better. I know it'd be perfect, but then I wasn't going to start. But I want to thank everybody for their, their well wishes and their concern.
Ms. Conway?
I'd like to welcome Brad back. We missed your presence. Nice to see you. Hope your health continues to improve. Beyond that, I'm good.
Ms. Delly?
I have a couple of things. And Brad, it's great to see you. Really is. So I know we, we had a quick conversation now that you're here, and actually that Brad's here. I don't think that we knew for sure about who, or if we have a liaison to Wheaton from the board right now, where we talked about, we thought it was Mary, but it's not you.
Brad, I think it's you, right?
Actually, I don't think we ever took up, Bob Kimball always used to be the liaison. And I think, I don't think we ever really filled the slot after Bob left us. So we can, I mean, if people want me to do it, I can, I'd gladly, you know, do it. But if anybody else wants it, I mean, I have no preference.
Yeah, no doubt. I certainly, I couldn't, I know the time. Are you interested in it?
Are you interested?
If you are, you can, or Brad, if nobody's interested, I'll do it. But if-
I, I can certainly do it.
They do meet, Brad, I think they meet during the, the day, during the workday or the meetings over there. That's the only hangup. So.
No, I'm, I'm fine doing it. And then maybe if, if there's a meeting that I can't do because it's in the day, if-
Well, I know, I've gone to the breakfasts they have over there.
Are they good? I should ask that first.
They're very good. And, I mean, it was, both Bob and I would attend those. So, I mean, I think two, two people would be more than welcome, if that's the liaison position you're talking about.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah, in that case, I think that, yeah, we could share the responsibility.
Okay, great. Do we need to formally vote on that at all, or?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Well, that, so that brings me into my other thing. I actually met the AVP of student affairs last weekend, I think, and, and we just had a conversation about interns. And I know when, when Jack and I first started, we also had that conversation. I think that we just got busy with, with the mix of things. But what I'd like to talk to the board about now is entertaining and having discussions, official discussions with Wheaton on getting interns. You know, I know from our side, I think that it would be valuable to have somebody here. You know, one of the things that we've talked about is, especially with the town meeting, now that we have a date, making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and really mapping things out, so we understand what the expectations are, when we need to get things off of the warrant, and making sure that, that we review the warrant before it goes out. Like, I think it, it'd be nice to kind of have somebody who's, who's looking into things, providing us with, with some, I don't want to say recommendations, but, you know, giving them an opportunity to really get involved in, in town, town government too. I think as well, like, if you guys are fine with that, I'd like to reach out to Bill on FinCom and see if they would have any interest in an intern as well, to help with, you know, same thing, like looking at budgets and, and collecting data for us. And then we talked about specifically, like, somebody who could help with social media, website design, things like that. They do have a marketing group there as well. So if it's, if it's something where the, where the business officer, the student folks have, have somebody who's in that, in that career path, if we could entertain that too. I think I could certainly, I know from like an IDC perspective, it'd be nice to have somebody there too, with like a poly sci background, kind of poly sci or finance background that would, you know, have some input into, I don't want necessarily say what we're doing, but some of the things that we're doing. I mean, with everybody working full-time, it's hard to really kind of get some of those actionable items done. So I, I don't know what the process would be if we've had, like, official interns in the past.
Have we?
We have in some of the departments, right? We had, I want to say accounting. I know there've been some Wheaton students that have worked during the past. I don't-
I know Board of Health has you this summer.
Yeah, yeah. And Jen, I think Conservation.
Jen, I see.
Yeah.
So we can start looking at, have it, I don't know, as an agenda item on the future.
Anything else, Ms. Delly?
Well, thinking of Wheaton too, I know we talked about Howard Street during one-
one meeting, or Mike, was that you and I separately?
I don't know. About?
About Howard Street, and they had interest-
Yeah.
-in taking that over. May, maybe it's something that Brad and I can, can talk to them about.
That was, we were looking at them to donate land, some land to the town, and then we swapped Howard Street for the land.
Is that something-
Is that to open up 140?
Just because they own both sides of Howard Street, and I think in the past, people in town were under the impression that if Wheaton took it over, and if there's buildings there that we're getting taxes for, once Wheaton takes the street over, then we wouldn't get taxes, but it doesn't make a difference who owns the street, it's what are the buildings being used as.
You're right.
So, so the town, I know in the past, was approached, but was reluctant to give up the street, but if they're willing to give us something for it, that was what we were looking at.
Okay.
So we'll have some conversations and just see if there's interest in, go from there. I just had two more questions. The, Mike, I sent you an email about the host community agreement and the status of getting that back from council.
I haven't heard back from council on that yet.
Can we try to let a fire under them to get that? Especially with the, some of the others, some of the other interests?
Yeah.
If we can take a look. And then additionally, so in respect to that, the, Sandy had sent an email, Sandy Olerhead had sent an email about the overlay and hours for Serpeth.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I don't, I don't know the, the whole background of it, but she had indicated something like, there are 40 hours that are provided from them, 20 go to the board and 20 go to the planning board?
Yeah, I know Paul was trying to arrange a meeting to see how they're allotting all the hours this year, because there's so many different things they're working on.
Who, who would, I mean, wouldn't we allot those hours if those hours are supposed to go to the selectmen?
The hours just go, I don't, I don't know if any go to the selectmen, I mean, they're town, town hours, so, we just, with the zoning overlay, anything, any zoning changes that he, the planning board has to do, we'll have to look and see whether they're allotting all the hours right now.
Okay, yeah, because my understanding was that they're split, and that the Board of Selectmen have 20, and there are 20 that go to the planning board. So if that's the case, I'd, I'd like for us to have some, some discussion on how those, how those hours are allotted, but I can ask Sandy to get more information on that, and then if you can follow up with Paul and see the status of a meeting, so that we can have some discussion on this, because if we're looking to get to the May, the May meeting, we're gonna need to at least know if we have some assistance from them or if we don't for an overlay.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I had.
Uh, Ms. Steele?
Chairman, just a quick thing, I should have mentioned it before, but it wasn't on my mind when the Eagle Skull was here, we should mention that the, it looks great, he did a great job, but the paint was actually donated by Bob Kimball.
Oh.
That should be mentioned.
That should be included, yep.
But, yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you. Under one minute, I approved the report of Vice Chairman Mike Flaherty on the filing payroll and invoice warrants, I approved invoice warrant AP 20-22 dated November 27, 2019, in the amount of $1,475,503.68. Approved invoice warrant AP 20-23 dated December 5, 2019, in the amount of $327,641.17. An approved payroll warrant PR 20-12 for the weekend of November 30, 2019, warrant dated December 5, 2019, in the amount of $1,769,506.26. We have some minutes to approve? We can take these all in one?
I don't know that I have all of them. Did you, did you have all of them?
I was able to get through the first three, if not read.
But no, I'm only, did you get them all in an email? I only have, that email only had August 29th in it for me.
Mine had all of the other ones.
Did you sent, you sent one email, Mike, with all of them, right?
It was in the meeting packet for today. I don't know what was in the track changes version.
No, I thought the Word documents.
I printed mine off the PDF.
Mike, do you remember, did you send the?
They were all in the meeting, all the meeting packet.
So we don't have the original Word, other than the August 29th?
Right.
The other thing I ask is that the September 19th meeting, number five, be separated, only because the other four, I was presenting that, the September 19th, that was not.
Okay.
So I wouldn't want to vote.
Yep.
Yeah, you have, those are all.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the June 27th executive session, is that?
I was just gonna ask the same thing.
Because I, I, if it is, I don't think that we should-
I don't want to be, yeah.
You can approve them, but don't release them.
And is there, like, a protection that it won't be released?
Yeah.
Okay.
That should be-
And then at some point, does it have to be released?
It should be in the motion?
It should be in the motion.
Okay.
To approve but don't release, and then when the matter's settled, then it can be released, but not until.
Okay.
So you know what, let's take these individually.
Can we do these one, yeah?
Yep.
Could we? Because I, I know there are a couple that I wasn't through and a couple that I am, and then that way, if we just have a couple minutes, I can, I can scan it real quick, I don't know if Jack, if you have time for it or not.
She wants to see the September 5th with all the edits.
I mean, we have. This is, is this the last thing on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Don't look at me like that.
I mean, Ms. Delly, if you feel like you haven't had, I prefer that we couch the ones that you don't feel like you had time to review, as opposed to trying to scan through them quickly here, it's, it's nothing mission critical here.
So I have, I have not reviewed September 5th or September 19th.
Okay.
And of course, that's the one that I have, it's definitely, yeah, the 19th. I think, I was halfway through the other one.
So why don't we just approve the one that everybody has and put the rest on next week?
Yep.
Right, so.
So everyone feels comfortable doing June 3rd, June 27th, and August 29th?
Uh, hang tight. I, I didn't, one of these, June 27th, I wasn't there for the executive session, so if you guys are, if you've read that one.
Okay, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June 3, 2019 meeting?
Still moved, second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 27, 2019 executive session to be released at a later date.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought that was the one that you just did. Did you just do June 3rd?
June 3rd.
I haven't read June 3rd, I don't think.
Let's read it.
Oh, I did, I did. I didn't audibly vote, but I support it.
Okay, thank you.
Still moved, second.
Are we doing the executive session?
We're doing the executive session.
And if you said not to be released?
To release at a later date.
Then, carry on.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining on that one.
Roll call.
Oh, we have to do that roll call, right? All right, so, motion in a second for the June 27th executive session, Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Delly?
Abstaining.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Bramall?
Yes.
I have to vote yes. So for, if anyone has a suggestion. Chair, entertain a motion for the August 29th, to approve the minutes from the August 29, 2019, Board of Selectmen meeting?
Still moved, second.
Yeah, for discussion.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Mike, what you supplied us, that's, this is the one that I submitted quite a bit of changes.
Yeah.
Right? Can I just have one second, so, to just focus in on the changes? Because I have the trapped ones right here.
So while Renee's reading, how are the minutes for the most recent meetings since Jen's been out being captured?
Carol is watching the video from cable and doing them from that.
Okay.
And Jen will be back in two weeks.
Oh, she's back to work in two weeks? Excellent. I'm good on the 29th. Thank you for the time.
So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we will couch September 5 and September 19 for a future meeting. Next meeting will be Tuesday, December 19th, that's a joint meeting with the School Committee, okay?
The 17th, Tuesdays.
Tuesday, December 17th, yep.
Do you want to try to get through the short one? The executive session with the 19th?
Let's just take them both together on the, so we'll just couch it. So next meeting, if you have anything that you want on the agenda, please send Mike and I an email and we'll get it on there.
Is that agenda being developed jointly with the School Committee and FinCom?
Yeah.
We'll have, we'll develop, if anything that you want on there, let me know.
Okay, will do. No executive session, anything further to come for, for the board? Seeing none, Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Shane.